19th, 6:00 PM meeting please. Would everybody put their cell phone on mute? We appreciate that. Public for input pertaining to agenda items? If not, we'll move on to the Murdoch Boulevard property update.
Just wanted to get counsel update on where we're at with the getting the property ready for sale. The subdivision has been completed. It was voted on by Crawford County. It was looked at by the City Planning Commission and we are waiting for an action memo from City Planning. I wanted to get it on here. We anticipate we'll have that memo before the meeting, so we'd like to get it on the agenda for a vote on the 24th, which is next week. As far as the zoning change, we are planning on a public hearing prior to our vote meeting next week for the, for the public hearing. That would be purposes to get input from anybody in that neighborhood that has any issues with that zoning change. Pending the outcome of that hearing, we're gonna, we'll stick this on the agenda, but if there's any issues naturally, we can remove it at the night of the meeting, but we'd like that on the agenda, the approval for the zone also. That's where we're at. Everything's moving forward. We have the, as you saw in your packets there, Diana's made up a nice brochure of the property that we're going to be putting out for sale. There's one electrical issue that's being handled also. They can divide the mall hall from the townhouses, the electrical service. We spoke to Pennalec and it's, it's all in the planning stage. Henderson Electric's gonna do that switch over. Nothing has really been done to mall hall. We have to run a new service down to the townhouses, so that we can be separate when we separate the property. Other than that, we're ready to get, we'll be ready if this, if we get this all passed at the next meeting, we'll be ready to go out to bid. We want to have an open house, let people view it. We'll advertise that. If you have anywhere specific you'd like us to advertise that, please let me know. We're gonna go as far out as we can possibly afford to do. In newspapers, area shopper and all, you know, every, everything that we can afford to put it in. Of course, the more advertising, the better chance we have of getting a better bid. I did, yeah, we talked last meeting about what that dollar amount minimum bid was going to be. You know, I've spoken with a realtor, a local realtor and they, they say that the appraisal that Pitt did on it is accurate. Far as what the city wants, that's entirely up to the city. You know, they won't commit to anything like that. Personally, I think, and tell, please tell me if you have a different opinion, but I think 200 on the townhouses is reasonable to start a bid. We can, we also will have the right to accept or refuse any bid. Ball Hall's a little different scenario. It's, it needs a lot more work. It's more limited as to what it can be used for. I think if we start that bid at 100,000 and see what we get and then decide if we want to accept those bids or not accept those bids. And I, I truly believe that it's, you know, well, obviously we don't want to sit on it. We want to get that on the table.
Are appraisals are dated when?
One year ago.
One year ago.
It was, uh, well, now it's close to two. It would be two this January. They're dated January of about 17, I think, 16, 18, 17.
Does that satisfy any obligatory requirements in terms of
Yeah, what?
Evaluation?
Yeah.
Just another note on this proposed new zone, noting that it is a special, currently a special conservation area. Is there anything in terms of D E P, EPA, any of those kind of players that
Nothing that I've heard of.
Anything comments on or?
I mean, we, we had the surveyor do it. The only, the only issue that we had was we had it placed on the map as if it was already an R3 instead of an S1, because we didn't want to go back and change all of that, obviously. But that's, no other issues D E P or none of that. Only a factor up there on the hill. It's not in a flood zone. It's not in any special, you know, it doesn't have any special issues.
What exactly is a special conservation area?
That's the whole Burgess Park, you know, any of those, yeah, they're
Almost all of our parks are designated that way.
Basically, when they put this zoning together, they, they had a category of things that they didn't really know what to call them, so they called it special conservation and that's where parks and that type of thing went.
Okay, so no, no state
No, that, that name special conservation doesn't really mean it has any state issues or anything like that.
Well, in dividing the property, I'm looking at this picture here. Does the land come with ball hall in the front? Where is the boundary on?
The division is the driveway between the two, between ball hall. Now, the driveway that goes back there would be part of the ball hall block. The parking lot in front facing Murdoch Boulevard would go with the townhouses.
Wait, say that, say that again, I'm looking at this picture here.
This is not a very good picture for that. We'll be ready, between the buildings, there's a little parking lot in here.
And that parking lot goes with the ball hall, okay.
The parking lot in the front goes with the townhouses. It's directly in front of the townhouses.
Okay, so I'm looking at this green space here. That goes with ball hall?
That's on, that's on the side. That's part of our park.
That's ours?
Right.
That meant?
There's a hill there, right at the top of the hill. If you go there, you'll see the surveyor mark.
Is that by the yellow orange? Is that the buffer she's talking about?
No, that's on the, that's on
No, I'm looking at this picture here and I also see a fence and I didn't know if that fence was in the yellow sheet.
Yeah, this is a little bit better to see it. You see the driveway coming back. The property lines about a few feet out of this driveway goes a little bit of an angle back this way.
Okay.
So all of this property here still remains the same.
I see, okay.
The, I'm sorry, this is the driveway. This is below it here. See this old driveway? Yeah, the property line is right at that area.
Okay.
You can actually see it from the lake, see the line? That's property. Most of it on that downside, it still remains the same.
Well, I received a notification from an individual today that apparently there's some false information being circulated that we are closing Murdoch Boulevard. No, and I, and this has nothing to do with Murdoch Boulevard.
Nothing at all to do with Murdoch Boulevard.
Okay.
More sensationalism.
And if any, after the meeting, if anybody would like to see this little pamphlet, please come up and do so. And we also, like Diana said, we have the map also.
So just for further clarification, those estimated values for real estate were?
How much were they? The townhouses together was 340,000. Mall hall was 340,000 also.
So what do you think about putting on a minimum bid of 100,000?
Yeah, I think we may even have a bid. I was just gonna ask him a quick question. Now, this'll be sealed bid or is this gonna be an auction type?
Oh, no, sealed bid. Sealed bid that will be opened in a public meeting at City Hall.
At the end of the meeting, under public participation, at that point, I would like to hear some input from the puppet regarding that figure. Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, let's move on to the second reading, Council of the 6th, 2019, the non-uniform pension amendment, September 24th.
Just a reminder, that's, that's to update our, our Public Works Pension to, so that it complies with the new IRS laws. And that will be the second reading. We've already had the first.
Did you figure out? You're working on it, okay. What I'll do is I'll move, I'll continue, okay. All right, now let's move on to the new Public Works Director, his introduction, Mr. Manross.
We have made a choice for a Public Works Director and we, Patrick Braun is who we chose. Patrick Braun has done a lot of work for the city. You're familiar with a lot of it. Patrick had his own business and he was instrumental on a lot of projects. Very, done most of the ball field that you see down there, the old Cyclops Field. He was involved in the, the work that was done by the bus garage. And I'll just let him come up and introduce himself and maybe give you a little background of, you know, what he, what he's done prior to this job.
Yeah, stay there, Patrick.
Yeah, for those of you don't know, my name's Patrick Braun. I guess I am the new Public Works Director. And just to give you a little bit about myself, I was not born in Titusville, but my family moved here at a very young age. I graduated high school in Titusville here and I went on and graduated from Pennsylvania College of Technology. For the past 12 years, I've been working in a construction excavation field. Just look forward to this opportunity. Appreciate everything, so is there any questions I can answer at this time?
Patrick's done a lot of improvements in this town. I know I, I had the opportunity to watch him work up at Evans Lodge and all of that excavated up there. We thank Patrick for it. He's done a terrific job.
Appreciate it.
The ball field, terrific. Just been a real asset to this community.
Thank you. You have afforded this opportunity and I think it's, it's gonna be a good fit for me, so.
Yes. I don't know if you know Mr. Frazier?
We met.
Don Frazier?
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it.
This is Bill Adelman. Heather B. Nardi. And I don't need to shake your hand because I'm sweaty. So, Patrick, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Yes, have a blessed evening.
Also, for the public's information, Patrick won't be starting until the 28th of October. The reason for the delay, obviously he's in business and he has some projects of his own to complete, along with, once he becomes employed by the city, I can't hire him anymore as a contractor and I have like three jobs I'd like to complete before he takes the job, because he does a little job. We also have some snacks out back for after the meeting, so that we can celebrate both Patrick and Mr. Gurney here that is in charge of the airport. We'll introduce him in a minute.
Patrick, I encourage you and your wife to stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay. All right. Ray, is your last name pronounced Gurney?
Gurney, yeah.
Gurney. You're welcome. All right, Mr. Gurney.
Okay, for those of you who don't know, Ray, he's gonna give you a little background of his past history. He started, what, maybe three weeks ago as the new airport manager. Ray has an extensive background in aviation, which I'm sure he's gonna go through. He's also going to give a, a little video here about some of the things that's going on at the airport, what his intentions are to do in the near future at the airport. And I'll just turn it over to him. Ray, it's all yours.
John, will you turn that around so that the folks can see that? I'm sorry. Jeff, can you, is there any way you can turn that on and turn that around? Do you know how to do that?
I don't know where the power button is.
Okay.
They're tricky on these TVs.
Did they, did you see that okay?
Yep, yes.
All right. Okay, Ray.
Okay, thank you. My name is Raymond Gurney, it's pronounced Gurney, double E. I was hired, started on August 12th. My background is I have a, my bachelor's degree from University of Pittsburgh and associate's in supervision technology, which was conferred on me here in Titusville. I'm originally from Franklin and I really love this area. I have a radio background with amateur extra, bass extra, GRL license. Can work on radios and I'm a private pilot and I have endorsements for my performance complex and tail wheel. I've worked in the aerospace industry since 90, since 84, 1984. And when I left Boeing in 2016, I started a private consulting and have done some flight test work out in Washington State with Mitsubishi. I'm very honored to be, to be part of the City of Titusville team. I think I'm joining a group of people that are not intimidated and set agendas and follow through with, with goals. So, I'll go through the, the airport, things that have been found when I started. Okay, we have erosion problems along fence line. We have wildlife entrance, again, due to the erosion. We have inoperable gate locks. So now that was the property. We'll move on to equipment. This is a lineup of all the power equipment that's available at the airport. The Airport Authority previously had made all these purchases. Through Pennsylvania dispersed federal funds. They come from taxation from the aviation industry. You can see we have several tractors with mowers. We have a little cart for spraying herb side along the runway. We have snow removal equipment. That's the dump truck that's at the back. And we also have another white Chevy, Chevy, right?
Dodge.
Dodge, okay. We have a white Dodge pickup with, has a plow fixture on the front. It's smaller and much older. I think it's a 90s, maybe early 2000s, but this equipment is in, well, let's go on. Generally unkept. My opinion is the poor. You can see it's not cleaned very well. We have broken parts. It's just some examples of things that I found. Lack of maintenance. This appears to be the original ore filter on one of the older tractors. So I, I don't have any records of this being changed recently. And we'll move on to the FAA has charts for the aviation industry. The charts have not been updated. They, they added a taxiway. Now, the Airport Authority did some wonderful work in the past. And what I had noticed is that since about 2012, there had been a degradation in the amount of effort that was being put forth. Not to say it went to zero, but it, so we had a new taxiway put in. The charts were incorrect, so sent off to the FAA charting division to have these things updated. Plan in-work activities at the airport currently, preventative maintenance, oil changes, greasing and cleaning the powered equipment. Updates all the current FAA charts. Bring them up to currency. Property repairs. We intend to divert the erosion problem away from the fence line. Property maintenance, a lot has been done by volunteers and I believe that volunteers come out and, and make a tremendous effort. But the cleanup work after they've done is, has been neglected. So there was a lot to say for having volunteers with no incentive for the volunteers other than enjoyment of being at the airport. So, again, planned in-work activities, Pennsylvania dispersment of federal funding. City management and volunteers, including one council member and another volunteer, are very active in pursuing acquiring these funds for the city town. There are some things that have been in work from past which are being completed this year. We are expecting to have a fuel pump system change from proprietary card billing to credit cards. Also, I believe the design work for the repaving or repair of the runway has been moved into the approved for design work. So the city is, and can I ask a question, council members, you might know. The, the design work was out, put out for bid for the repair? Is that correct?
We are having a meeting on that, with the scope. We're meeting Thursday to have the scope of, of a project to be discussed. And we will meet with the engineering firm and we're hoping that the state engineer will also be there too.
Thank you.
As well as you, we also have the other one for instructions. So basically, Ray, we have three that probably can be worked on this year. Three arrangements.
Yes. And just to update the, you folks, I did have some communication with the acting manager at Benango Regional. He's going to go to a Pendoff meeting in Old City and will be, one of the issues I brought up was we'd like a road sign. And he mentioned on the instructions, different phases that they're in and phase three. And he says it's funded to acquire easements on adjacent properties for tree top. That's just a point to make now. So, when the end here, I expect the all issue, all the issues that we have were as found, which were including the equipment, the property and the charting to be corrected. Anticipates having all of the airport records digitized and available on server at the airport, available to city personnel. Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Do you want to see any of the voters? This is nice for all of you.
Ray, let me ask you something regarding the records. How far back do you, do you have records for the, the airport?
I don't know the answers to that. I'll find you and get back with you with that.
Okay.
Larry Manross has given me a stack of Airport Authority records. I have not, I have not gone through that. I have a scanner and expect to digitize that all and have it placed on the server at the airport and be available for council members. Anyone would access it.
Because I was told that a lot of the records are gone.
Well, what I can say for certain is that the manuals for the equipment are not available. Usually when you buy, like, on your tractor, you will get the operating manuals, service manuals maybe.
Right.
None of that's available. Now, on that point, though, let me, let me mention something else of equipment. It's, it's been received, I believe that there've been a, a number of pieces of equipment that are, were there and are no longer there. And what I have found in the five weeks that I've been working there is things that are not available. I bring in from home. So I believe that that had been occurring in the past as well. And so when the authority just was removed, I believe that the people that had been volunteering and working there as part of the authority took personal items home. Of course, other things like the manuals are amiss and no explanation.
You know, one other question, Ray, I don't think you're gonna know this, and I don't know, Dawn, you know this, but can you look or tell me, when was the grant applied for, for the snow removal equipment building? Would you know when that was applied? I see that it was granted, they were, let me see here. They've been selected for funding through, in, in 2016, but do you know that?
What I know, and I don't have all the information on that, but I have when, when the state engineer worked with them, they had to go through a process, which we've recently gone through, another process. You have basically your projects for a four-year window. That's a rolling buffer type of a concept. So that process was around 2016 that they were wanting the money for that. In fact, when I was down at a meeting the other day, it was 2016 money that was rolled into 2017 money and 2018 money to do the SRE building. So talks of SRE building happened early or during the year of 2016 that I know of.
Okay, would you look into that for me, Ray, and get back with us?
Okay, that's true. I was wondering, wanted to know how far back the records go.
Yes, and I'd like, yes.
And the, the
The SRE?
See what's to be asked for the SRE.
When the grant was
Snow removal equipment shed.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Ray, thank you for the presentation. Okay, let's move on to the Resolution Number 15 of 2019, the fiscal year 2018 CDVG modification.
As we discussed in the past meetings and the hearings, the money from the 2018 CDVG, we were going to allocate, reallocate for the repairs, the, the roof expansion on the fire department. That project is while underway. I received actually the drawings today from the engineer. That amount of money that we allocated previously for the walk bridge on Perry Street is about $170,000. So that money would be reallocated toward this project and then the 2019 money would then be allocated for the bridge again. Hopefully, we would make the time limit so that the bridge is removed when that money's available. That money would have expired before the bridge was done, so we really had to do something different to reallocate that money and use it for something else. The perfect project, since we were donated a very nice aerial truck, is to get it into the building so that we don't have it sitting outside. So we're going to put a big roof on the both bays, both of the big door bays of the fire department, extending that roof up a little less than two feet, so we'll be able to give the new aerial truck in there. It will be a pitched roof. It will be shingles. Of course, it'll have, you know, all the trim and stuff. It'll, it'll be attractive to be from the street to be grass. Be insulated, steel on the ceilings, all the lighting.
And this year?
Yeah, that's, that will watch bid in October very, very soon. Finished up the plans, it'll go to bid and it has to be, I think it's 60 days and has to be completed after it's bid.
Questions? Okay, let's move on to the Resolution Number 16, 2019, the CDVG Fair Housing.
Because we changed the, the project, we have to do this resolution again. It's, it's just a procedural resolution telling that we're not going to be prejudiced or, you know, all of those things.
That's because we reallocated the money. So it's just a typical
Right, so it's the same one we passed for the project for the Perry Street Bridge, now we have to re-pass it.
Okay.
Okay, Resolution 17, sale of city property.
That's just the resolution for the property, so that we can move forward with that sale.
Okay, the Resolution 18, please pension fire actuary of assumptions.
Okay, I received a notice from John Vardo, our actuary, and you have a copy of it in your packet. And he is recommending, and I agree with him, we, we were doing our asset valuation method by market value. He recommends that we now go to a five-year Uh, he recommends that we now go to a five-year smooth asset evaluation. This will save us probably seventy thousand dollars next year in our MMOs by doing this. Uh, it would also, and I can't promise you this, and neither could he, it could very possibly, depending on the investments, move us back into a, a one situation instead of a two as far as distressed, which is, which is really good for us. We were up until last year, one, and we dropped because we had some bad
We were, if I remember, we were at seventy-three percent or something like that, and then because of additional economic issues with the stock market, as well as, um, more retirees, that we dropped down to sixty-eight. So this is gonna be a, a, from a three to a five-year smoothing, is that what it is?
Yeah, yep. And, uh, yeah, he said it would be to our benefit to do that, and after speaking with him for quite some time, I, I totally agree.
That'll take
It doesn't affect the benefits or anything like that in any way.
What this will do is take out the, the jerks every year.
Yep, takes out the market highs and lows.
This is effective January first?
Right, this will be for next year.
Okay, are there any questions or comments regarding that?
No, we can do that.
Yeah, and that goes for the fire pension also?
Yes.
Same thing. Okay, the housing authority appointment, Heather, you said on that, and I see where Steve Coleman asked you, um, continue?
Steve did a great job, so I would definitely recommend him for the appointment, so, and I knew the authority would probably love to have him back.
He does a lot of great volunteering for the work. Okay, the two thousand twenty budget schedule.
Okay, that time of year again, where we have to set a schedule so that everyone's aware of, uh, what we're gonna do with the budget. Uh, as you can see from the sheet in your packet, Tuesday, October fifteenth is when we plan to hand out the draft budget, so the council has ample opportunity to look it over. On October twenty-second will be our first budget work session. It will be following the city council meeting. Uh, November nineteenth will be another budget work session, work session number two, that will be at the same time we're having our council work session. And Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, will be the first reading of the two thousand twenty budget. December twenty-fourth, which is Christmas Eve, uh, would be the second reading of the two thousand twenty budget. We have to meet certain timelines, you know, we have to have so many days between it, we didn't really wanna have that Christmas Eve, but we really didn't have an answer on how to avoid that.
We can't make that to twenty-third?
I don't know if that means that, we talked about that, Diana and I, but I don't remember what we, we counted up days and what we
Because of the council voting meeting, you would have to take, you'd have to be thirty days, so what you're talking about, November twenty-sixth and December twenty-fourth, those two days, you would have to have a, um, a special meeting, so to say, on Monday, is that how that would happen? I think maybe Rich would
Rich, do you know that? Could, that we, if we could have that on the twenty-third of December?
You'd have to publish, publish a notice of it, other than that, I would say, probably.
Would that be a special meeting, or would you take
Special meeting, it's not part of the order.
Now, does that interfere in the timeline with the budget?
Well, I think our budget deadline is to have it adopted by the end of the year.
Okay.
But would we still have to, we wouldn't necessarily have to have our December twenty-fourth meeting, if we had a special meeting the twenty-third, we would have to have one the twenty-fourth.
No, you just do the, whatever's on the agenda, give a notice with your add for the special meeting and all those items that can be taken up.
Those two days become your council meeting day, right?
That's normally how we do that.
Yeah.
Well, in other words, those two times would be on a Monday, council would meet.
Well, you're talking about both of those, you're talking about the November eight moving in, and also the
No.
The only reason I said that was because I didn't know, I didn't do math on the thing here, whether you had to be thirty days between yours.
I, isn't there a thirty-day? Between, I thought between the first and second reading, we had to have a thirty-day period.
At that point, I think, yeah, much longer than that.
Okay, why don't you folks look into it, and then next week let us know, if that's the case.
All right, yeah, I'm thinking we had to include a day period.
If that's the case, we could always change the November twenty-sixth meeting, so it coincides with that. We could always do a Monday if need be, if we need that thirty-day window.
Check it out.
Okay, let us know next week. Okay, um, moving on to public participation.
Larry Anderson, one twenty, Russell Waller, uh, Larry said, would you say the amount for the bridge was?
One hundred and seventy thousand.
And what are we gonna spend on that roof?
Well, I'd like to tell you how to do that figure exactly, the engineer has given us the back to me. He did make a statement, though, that he hopes that that would make, that would be enough to complete that job, so.
I know, two meetings back, we didn't think it would be called that.
I'm still blown away, but when you, when you do it through CDVG money, you have to meet Davis Bacon federal wages. So anybody working on it receives those wages. Normally, that would at least double the cost of a project, because even though it's a basic carpenter-type project, we still had to have it all drawn up, and, uh, you know, bid process, all that stuff has to be done, and that engineering alone will probably get up toward the ten thousand dollar mark. It just adds up, sadly said.
I guess whether it's gonna be enough, it's gonna be less, or we're gonna need money on the table, and there'd be an alternate, or if there's money on the table or something else.
Yeah, it won't go away. If the money's on the table, next year it can be combined with the following year money, it can be spent up to three years. So, yeah, it, it won't just go away, it's still the, the
The other, uh, question, when you were talking about the ball hall, uh, you're talking about leaving a quarter of a million dollars on the table, I realize we're not gonna get anywhere near the, what, what that was, uh, what they said the valuation was, but it seems like to me that that's quite a drop from the valuation to one hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred, to me, on the dorms, that, that seems fine, but it just seems like we're dropping an awful lot. I, I'd rather see that in the city coffers, but I realize we'd wanna get rid of those too.
I guess my fear, Larry, is, uh, that we have to go through winter's heating, ball hall, all of the heat in there is baseboard heat. If that, we cannot let that building freeze, obviously, or it'll have serious issues. It needs a lot of work, it's set up like a dormitory, meaning there's one, one restroom for each floor. It's not like individual restrooms like the townhouses.
There was, and that's why I have no idea.
Yeah, it's like a dormitory, it has a great big room, it used to be a cafeteria. Uh, and it, there's a lot of maintenance that hasn't been done to ball hall, the structure itself is solid, but the inside, and I, I don't know, I think there's thirty-some dorm rooms in there, individual rooms, so it's kinda limited. Someone's gonna have to put a lot of money into it to utilize it.
And I was all, council visited that?
I have did.
I have had the opportunity to look at this, I have.
Yes, I did, I did. And there was a lot of contents there that they said they were leaving, and
They were bunk beds.
Yeah, but there was a whole lot in the restroom, of the, I'm sorry, the cafeteria area, and
But it's not a lot of value, it's things like lumber and, you know, I mean, it doesn't amount to a lot of value.
Well, when we took that tour, they said they were leaving everything, so apparently they, they changed their mind, which
The, yeah, 'cause some of that, part of, one of those buildings was used as Pitt's maintenance building for a while, so there were some timber supply, not timber, but you know, wood supplies and stuff like that, construction.
Which we would use, Public Works will clean that out and keep that out, obviously. It's, like I said, it has very little value, but it, it, we use it for cement forms and things like that.
Well, are we planning on the open house for October third?
That's our tentative date, that all depends on the engineer, whether, you know, whether we're out to, uh, we're advertised by then. A lot of things have to happen, but that's, that's what we're shooting for.
And is that a Saturday? I think we need to put it on a weekend, a Saturday?
Even if it's like a Friday or
Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah, like I say, we can put that whenever you guys would like, you know, we just have to advertise.
Because people work, and they're not available, and I think we need to get as much
So the open house, the open house, you're talking about for just any public, or people that are fit?
Well, it's a, it's a pre-bid opening, I mean, certainly people can come in later if they'd like to, but it's actually a pre-bid open house. Uh, also, if they can't make that, we certainly would take an appointment and show it to them, we're not above that.
Has anybody expressed any interest in either of them at this point?
We've had several people, uh, express interest in the townhouses. As far as ball hall, I have not had any requirements.
Now, have we put any limitations on them, on any apartments, what can be done, or?
Not in this bid package, because that's all really controlled by our zoning.
Okay.
So, yeah, there are limitations that they already have to comply with.
My only thought on here is just, and, 'cause I really don't know, I'll be totally honest with you, is whether that one hundred could be a little bit more, but I have to trust, have to trust the, the advice of where you're getting from, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd rather get some bids than no bids, and have to have the time to do all that over again, and, uh, maybe we'll get some real good bids, I have no idea on that.
I agree.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Hi, Mary, I have a couple of questions as well. Uh, talking about the Bergak Boulevard property, can you tell me, uh, what the average monthly heat is for that?
I can only tell you what the Pitt told me their heating bill was for an entire year for both properties combined, and it was twelve thousand dollars.
Twelve thousand. I believe you can call National Fuel and ask them for an average monthly bill of those properties.
But it depends if they're occupied, naturally, it's gonna be a lot higher than the minimum heat that's been in them lately at fifty degrees.
Who'd have told you the average? Uh, now, you were talking about the, uh, uh, snow removal building grant, uh, as there was. Uh, was that done by the city? Did they, who did the, the grant for that?
We didn't.
Airport authority.
Airport authority?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then also, what's the state requirement for a municipality concerning real estate for appraisals? Do they have to, uh, do an appraisal when you acquire a piece of property? I mean, what's the state requirement?
I don't believe they do, but I defer that to Rich, it's not required.
Okay, and then also, uh, Larry had brought up, uh, with Patrick Braun, that he can't hire until, uh, he can't start until October twenty-eighth or somewhere around there. You had said there's a few projects that you want to use them on, what few projects do you plan on using Mr. Braun on?
We have a ditching issue up on South Perry Street from that last hard rain that washed that ditch out, and we don't have equipment to do a, a decent job to do that out and restone it. Uh, Patrick was involved when we did it the last time. Uh, the second job that we have, there's another ditch that needs cleaned out at the Footsmoke Boulevard, it was back on to some private property, but it's our ditch, it's our right of way. Uh, and again, we need his equipment on tracks, we don't have anything on tracks, uh, the ground's soft. There's one more, but I can't think of it. It's not a big project, it's very small.
Now, since Patrick's gonna be working for Public Works, and he can't work for the city because of a, a ethical issue, is the city gonna consider purchasing their own equipment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Council? Okay, um, oops. Okay, um, we are going to we're going to go into an executive meeting, um, and this is in regards to the city council vacancy, we're going to interview Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
I thought the public comment section was over.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Didn't see him, you talked to him before the meeting.
Sorry about that. Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, my, I wanted to introduce Tracy Beely, she works with me on a program for the bullying. Um, August twenty-sixth, we were, um, for official chapter in Tyson. And we're joined with forty-nine other states and eighteen countries now. Um, I just wanna reiterate some things, we are a child-based program, we do not deal with adult issues. Um, there are adult issues, I would suggest that people who do have adult issues should join together collectively and try and solve those. We do not deal with those. We work on children based on a bystander program. Um, anyone to add some stuff?
Yes, with facts, yes. Um, I understand you wanted some facts from the last meeting. Uh, a hundred and sixty thousand children a year miss school because of the fear of bullying. In the last seven and a half years, the United States has lost sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen thousand children to suis- suicide because of bullying.
Give me that figure again, please.
Sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen thousand.
Wow.
Because of bullying, the youngest we know of is six years old. More than half of bullying situations, fifty-seven percent stop when a peer intervenes on behalf of a student being bullied. Suicide is the second leading cause of death in our young people's ages, ten to twenty-four years old. Second only to car wrecks. Seventy point six percent of young people say they have been bullied in their schools. Seventy point four percent of school staff has seen bullying. Sixty-two percent witnessed bullying two or more times in the last month. Forty-one percent witnessed bullying once a week or more. When bystanders intervene, bullying stops within ten seconds, fifty percent, fifty-seven percent of the time.
Stand for the silent is based on bystander programs we discussed last time, we ask children to muddy up with other children, to stand together to stop the bullying. Here recently, it was said that individuals have to go back to adults, um, we have a misconception of what an opinion is and what bullying is. An opinion is a judgment without fact or knowledge, it's just somebody's opinion. Bullying is, is a repetitive action, okay, it's ongoing, constantly, constantly. There's a difference when somebody says, I'm just giving an opinion, rather than I am not bullied, okay? Um, bullying is a person who eventually seeks harm or intimidates those who they perceive as vulnerable. They seek harm, intimidate, and coerce. Bullying behavior happens more than once, or have the potential to happen more than once in a repetitive manner. Bullying chooses its target, and it is repetitive, they seek approval by getting an audience. As it is with adults, it's the same with children, if there's somebody poking at somebody, and there's people standing around and they're not saying anything, then that adds, you know, fuel to it, because now they've got an audience, so they do it more often. Um, it is bigger on the social media, as you all know, I don't know how they will ever get a grasp on that, you know, tolerance for differences, not gonna like everybody, I'm not gonna like everybody, but everybody's gonna like me, but tolerance and respect, and, and we've lost that, you know, in our adults and, and our children. Um, I did wanna, I know that a video surfaced, I believe you've seen the video, I think Larry's seen the video, um, last time we talked about the park down there. Um, pretty bad video, it was, was pretty shocking. Um, it was handled by law enforcement. How these things happen, where we get to that point, is we get on our social media, and we become the big bully, the twenty-four hour, seven day a week, and we text each other, and we, and we poke at these individuals, and then we come together as a group of individuals that are doing this, and that gentleman was set up. That was just a tele event, so he's set up, he's drawn into the park, and then he gets jumped. So he's set up, he's drawn into the park, and then he gets jumped. And then what do we do? We're all standing out there with our phones. And then it hits that social media like that, spreads like wildfire. So with that, then you have the bullying increases, because now the child that was jumped and laying on the ground there is, well, you got your gallin' fee, so-and-so did this to you. So, I've encouraged parents and children, do not engage in that, because you're just as bad as the person creating the conflict. Um, a lot of times when you ignore these people, especially adults, they feel a little bit more, they do a little bit more poking. Uh, with children, if they can stand together and just say, "Hey, I see you have the video, don't post it," you know, had to freeze it down a little bit, but still, in fact, that video went around for at least forty-eight hours before it crossed my desk. So, and that's probably the worst that I have seen, you know.
I know you spoke into the school district.
Yes.
You said the last time you were here. Has, has there been any discussion at all? I think a big factor of this, definitely not an end-all solution, but is the fact that they allow kids to have cellphones in the classroom. Why isn't there a, a thing on the wall with numbers on it? They come in, "Put your cellphone in here, it's in number one, number two, you'll pick it up at the end of the class." Then they don't have time to sit there and bully people and then meet after school, and you've got trouble.
Well, our girls are at the middle school, and they're not supposed to have them in the classroom. I know my daughter and her daughter leave them in the locker, they're not supposed to have them in their lockers. Because if they're caught with them, they take them. So, that's at the middle school. At the high school, they are allowed to have them.
Yeah, I thought they weren't allowed to have them.
Exactly, they are.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something the school could do that would cost them next to nothing and would certainly deter a lot of this issue.
Exactly, they were told they weren't supposed to have them in class, and if they did, then they would take them. That, that would deter them also.
Some of the teachers I know are, they...
That's fine.
They look things up on, they let the kids...
Right.
Use them to get on the internet to look...
Yes.
But that, that'll have to be, you know, talking to the teachers and...
But they have their Chromebooks in every class, the kids all have their Chromebooks in every class, so... Well, what's the difference with that?
Again, when, again, I think this is something that we, as a group and then as a community, let's get a hold of the representatives at the school, sit down again, because we're gonna have more meetings.
And we've been, we've already been in contact with the school... Four times Friday. Four times on Friday. Four times Friday. Okay. So, we're reporting, I mean, it's coming across, and we're reporting. Stand for the Titusville Pennsylvania Stand for the Silent is coalition with the district and law enforcement to collectively solve these issues together. Um, misconception of stuff that's going on in the internet. Um, and I'm not gonna go into that, but, uh, yeah.
No, um, well, we'll just keep knocking on the doors, won't we?
Yes, yes. We have to.
Um...
I mean, the, the youth is crying, they're struggling. Just, just the, the one video that, that came across my desk, if you all were aware. The young man that sent that to me is friends with the boy, and he's just like, "Make it stop, it's all we want, make it stop." So we go into our parks and be safe and not have to carry weapons. They're ready to carry weapons to protect themselves, they shouldn't have to.
No.
You know? They're not born this, the, and these bullies are not born this way. You know, they're not born disrespectful, they're not born, but they're not born bullies that come out sweet babies.
I can say the police department saw that video while it was happening, and they were on that scene within minutes. Which naturally made a, a not as bad incident.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I spoke with an older lady today, and she lives across from the park, Roberts Brogan, and she said that the things that she witnesses there is just unbelievable. I mean, even down to, she witnessed a, a sex act there. I'm not kidding you. And so she told me what happened, and the kid, guys were all around, uh, it's, it's appalling.
It's unfortunate, that is one of the baddest parks in this town, one of the baddest. You can go to Burgess Park, and I don't think we have any of that, it's never been recorded, but for some reason, that park attracts it, I don't know why, but it does, it goes on.
I guess one of the reasons we put cameras in that park.
Yeah, yeah. So, hey, it's a community, we have to all work together. All right, girls, I wanna thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
All right, we just wanted to, you know, let everybody know that we're not bound by bylaw to accept or approve all individuals into our group. If a situation arises, we discuss the matter, I then take it to my director and we go forth with a decision. So, you know, anybody that comes to our group, it's not everybody that gets approved into our group. It just, you know, it just depends on the situation. We do not address adult issues, as she already said. Of course, it's just always about the kids and what's best for the kids in our area. We will not engage in differences among adults. My suggestion, the suggestion would be, if there's an issue, that citizens join together in a collective efforts to address those issues. But, yeah, in our group, I mean, definitely...
Tracy, that's all the approval, screening, intake.
I do all the approving, screening, intake, everything, so, you know, not everybody gets approved into the group. It just depends on, you know, a lot of times it's parents coming in, you know, that are coming into the group that have children, that, that need help with it. You know, we wanna keep our site as secure as it can be. Anybody that has kids, you know, would understand that, we don't want the information shared with everybody. And that, that's just, we gotta keep everybody's information, we don't want their stories out there, because they're scared, retaliation, right? You know, yeah.
Okay, girls, keep up the good work. Let us know when the next meeting is, so we can...
Do you have any questions, Mr. Bronn?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do have one last thing that I need to address, counsel. I received a phone call late this afternoon, actually, it was kind of convenient that we were meeting tonight. Uh, this was from a group of people who are concerned about the closing of Pope Center. Uh, they have gone around to different municipalities and gotten resolutions, and they would like us to do the same, create a resolution in support of keeping Pope open. Uh, they want to give all these resolutions, send them to Governor Wolf, and try to persuade him not to shut down Pope Center. So I just wanted to see if you were all, would like us to draft something up and, uh, you know, be involved in that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
It doesn't impact us a whole lot, I told her that, but she, she said there's at least thirty people who work at Pope in the Titusville. That's her stat, I don't know where she got that.
I don't know.
Well, we'll do what we can, yes, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm game. Okay. All right, um, going back to what I was talking about earlier, um, the city council vacancy, um, we had two... Two individuals that applied for the vacancy. Uh, the first one is Mrs. Tammy Champion of four eighteen West Main Street, a resident of the city for twenty years. Mrs. Champion is a member of the Board of Health and served as Secretary of the Air Force Building. And then we have Mr. Jonathan W. Crouch of seven oh eight North Perry Street, a resident of one year, seven months. Mr. Crouch ran in the May primary as a write-in and is currently on the ballot in the fall election. This is a very important decision this council has to make, because whomever we place will be a part of the team leading our town. We need to ask, who is Mrs. Tammy Champion? Who is Mr. Jonathan Crouch? Every citizen, every elector needs to know what these folks stand for, and rest assured, this council will do our due diligence to ask the questions and bring back to the public our findings. So we are going to adjourn the meeting and go into the interview, and the first interview is with Mr. Jonathan Crouch. I wanna thank everybody for coming, um, please come back next week, um, be a part of this, be a part of this meeting. Thank you for coming.
Mary, can I ask one last question, please?
We had the questions, um...
And then you added them, then you opened them back up, and I had my hand up.
So... What's your question, John?
Uh, at a previous meeting, from what I understand, you were a member of the, uh, standing for the silent, a committee member? Are you still a committee member?
I'm not a committee member.
Okay.
I didn't know I was a, am I a committee member?
No.
I don't, I didn't know that I was one.
You said, you said you were at a previous...
I never said I was a committee member, I went to a meeting, I went to a meeting at the school. Is that a committee member?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, the meeting is adjourned, and we'll go into, um, the snacks in the back, 'cause I want a cookie or whatever they have.